All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm calling this special meeting of the Sonoma County Junior College District Board of Trustees to order. Welcome to everyone in attendance here and online. We'll begin as we always do with our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we gather at Santa Rosa Junior College on the territorial traditional land of the Pomo people in Santa Rosa and the Coast Mewak people in Petaluma, past and present, and honor with gratitude the land itself and the people who have stewarded it throughout the generations. On behalf of the board, I appreciate folks coming a little bit earlier than our normal meeting to this study session. Today, we're focusing on Assembly Bill 1705, which is legislation that significantly influences how student placement and support in both mathematics and English courses across California's community college system occur. The goals today are to provide the board and the college community with a deeper understanding of that legislation, its requirements, and how students are responding to that legal paradigm. There'll be opportunities for public comment in just a minute and for questions from the board later in the presentation. So we will move on to item A1, which is public comments. If you have public comments, please grab a yellow comment card from the back of the room and provide it to Zara at the front desk. If you are online, please raise your hand at the appropriate time and you will be invited to provide your public comments as well. So we will start with, is it Osmarth? All right.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Osmarth Espejón Riquez. I'm a current student here at the Santa Rosa Junior College. My major is communications and my zodiac sign is a Pisces. So all the Pisces in here, shout out. So today I come here as a student, as a Latino student, coming with the purpose of talking about AB 1705 and the serious consequences that I might have for a lot of minority students like myself and other, especially at the Santa Rosa Junior College. Just to clarify and point out that the SRJC is HSI, Hispanic Servant Institute, and what makes it qualified as an HSI is the majority of Latino and Hispanic students here. So taking that into accountability and into mind, I kind of want to point out how this could really have an impact and how it can reinforce the deficit mindset. So the deficit mindset is based on the approach that students of color are not college ready. I'm saying students of color because as a reminder, we're in an HSI. Without this, a lot of people from background experiences that don't have the financial support, that don't have the family support, that don't have the support to be able to be into college-ready programs here at the JC are going to be limited once again. Now, the big point that I want to make with this is that it's going to create a barrier, not just for myself, but for other students. Research shows that students placed directly into transfer-level math and English with support, keyword right there, with support, are more likely to succeed than those placed into other tracks. Limiting AB 1705 will bring back a system where students of color are delayed or derailed from transfer to university or earning a degree. Now, my major is communications. Thankfully, I didn't have to do a lot of math and gratefully, I'm not really good at math, so I'm really thankful for that. But in high school, as a student, I attended Annalee High School and I also did a month at Pioneer. And I could really see the difference there. At Pioneer, there wasn't much support for me as a student. But when I went to Annalee, that's when I started seeing that most teachers were supporting me and like, there's actually math tutors and peer students who were like, kind of helping me become a better student, right? So when I transferred to the JC, I would have qualified for those classes that I, like those placement classes to take before I take like my transferring math. And thankfully, because AB 1705 was in place, I didn't have to do that.
And that's your three minutes, so if you could just conclude. Thank you very much. Appreciate you. Next up, we have Emily Schmidt.
Board and esteemed guests, my name is Emily Schmidt. I am faculty here at Santa Rosa Junior College in Humanities and Religious Studies. I am a member of the Faculty Association of California Community Colleges Board of Governors. And as I reviewed the presentation that was on the agenda today, I was disappointed to see no reference to the work of the Faculty Association of California Community Colleges, FAC, of the work that FAC has done regarding the negative and unintended consequences of California's AB 1705 or of the massive faculty and student input at the California Community Colleges Board of Governors meeting on January 14th, 2025, and at the California State Assembly AB 1705 Oversight Hearing on February 18th, 2025. FAC has surveyed and spoken with faculty and students across the system. Students have expressed struggles with the rigor of transfer-level courses. Many felt unprepared, particularly those with long academic gaps or learning disabilities. Some students, especially those without recent math or English experience, found it difficult to keep up with the fast pace and expectations of college-level work. Others noted that online courses exacerbated these difficulties. As an instructor of Religious Studies and Humanities courses, I have seen firsthand that students coming into my classes without appropriate support in pre-transfer-level English seriously struggle with reading course materials. Understanding complex writing, identifying main points, and evidence has become increasingly difficult. Writing clear sentences, paragraphs, and arguments that rely on a thesis statement and evidence has become increasingly difficult for my students since 2022 and the implementation of AB 1705. Ultimately, FAC's survey of students highlighted that the one-size-fits-all approach of direct placement doesn't work for all students. To ensure equitable outcomes, the community college system must offer tailored support to meet individual student needs, reaffirming its commitment to students of all skill levels. This means that we need to restore full access to pre-transfer-level math and English courses so that student agency to choose those classes is met with access to those classes. Also, I have
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the room wishing to provide public comment on this item? Seeing none, is there anyone online? Mike Vanderporten.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. I'll be very brief. First of all, Mike McGuire personally says that it was not the intent of the legislation to remove the remedial or catch-up classes. So what we're seeing is unintended consequences that was not intended by Mike McGuire or the legislature. We need to look at the four legs of the junior college. One of those is remedial, one of those or another one is the vocational and how removing these catch-up classes cuts off more than half of our population from coming back to a junior college, either shortly after high school or a long time thereafter. And then finally, I'll ask you to take a look at the data. If truly this program worked, we've now done an experiment for several years. If the students really could and wanted to and were able to take the higher-level classes and succeed, we'd see it in the numbers. And I think the numbers show the students who were forced into the higher-level classes simply didn't enroll. This is a real disaster for our community and for the state of California. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online wishing to provide public comment? All right. And one last check, anyone in the room? Seeing and hearing nobody, we will move on to our presentation on AB 1705. That's item A2. I'll turn it over to Vice President Dr. Robert Holcomb.
Thank you very much. All right. Good afternoon, members of the board, college community. I'd like to start by saying this is an exciting day for Santa Rosa Junior College. And it's exciting because in doing the study session, we're leaning into a fundamental question. That question is, how can we best organize our courses, our resources, and ourselves to support equitable student learning and educational attainment at SRJC? In this study session, we'll see several ways that AB 1705, AB 705 are helping us do that. But first, I'd like to introduce my fellow presenters today who are here with us. We have Dr. Cheryl Kavales-Doolin, English Department Chair, Cheryl. We have Dr. Jen Carlin Goldberg from the Math Department, Math Department Chair. We have April Oliver from the English for Multilingual Students Department, Department Chair as well. We have Dr. Jeremy Smotherman, Senior Director, Institutional Effectiveness, Research and Planning. We have Dr. Roman McNoly, Dean of Language Arts and Academic Foundations. And Dr. Victor Tam, Dean of Science, Technology, Engineering, Agriculture, and Mathematics. So we have a stellar group who've come together and are eager to engage with you today. In today's presentation, we'll go over some history of legislation. We will show you how there's been significant curriculum pathway redesign in the different academic departments. There'll be some data review and analysis, and then we'll hear about two particular programs that are being highlighted to help us in this work. So that's the structure of today's presentation. And so I'll start with some background that I hope can frame today's discussion. So for many years, when students first entered community colleges, they would take a standardized test in math and English, and then based on their placement scores, many of them would place into courses that were 1, 2, 3, sometimes maybe more, levels below transfer level or below college level. That means that they'd have to spend months, sometimes years, completing remedial courses before they'd ever get to take their first math or English college-level course. Not surprisingly, a significant number of students never made it through this remedial course sequence and never had the opportunity to take college-level math or English. If you look at the timeline that we've provided, in 2007, there was a major report highlighting the system-wide problem throughout the California Community College system. In 2008, there was a categorical program called the Basic Skills Initiative, and it was it was developed to invest in effective practices to try to address the system-wide problem. By 2010, colleges were piloting condensed pathways with fewer exit points and shorter time to completion, something known as acceleration. Then by 2014, we were learning that other metrics like student grade point average are better predictors of future academic success than standardized tests were. So in 2017, AB 705 was enacted and it required colleges to develop placement systems that moved away from standardized tests, moved away from remedial pathways, and toward open access to college-level math and English with robust embedded learning support structures. Then most recently, in 2022, there was AB 1705 that was enacted to maximize the probability that students complete transfer-level English and math within one year. And I should note that for EMLS students, it's a three-year pathway, three-year timeframe. And as a result of this, oh, sorry, go back. So as a result, our statewide system and our college have seen more students complete transfer-level math and English than ever before. Now, you won't necessarily see this math and English gain in successful course completion rates because before, only the most traditionally advantaged and prepared students had access to college-level math and English. Now, students with a broader range of academic skills and learner needs also get to take these courses. And so that explains the dip in successful course completion rates that you might see. Where you'll see the improved outcomes in college-level math and English is in a metric called throughput that shows that more students than ever are now taking, completing, and advancing through college-level math and English toward their educational goals and toward their full potential. Additionally, we're seeing more disproportionately impacted students accessing and completing transfer-level math and English. Simply put, many more students are now succeeding in college-level math and English than ever before. Although we acknowledge there's still more work to do and more ways that we can continue to to improve. With that, I'm happy to turn it over to my colleague from the Math Department, Department Chair Jen Carlin Goldberg.
As I attempt to not trip over something, is that the button? Hello, thank you so much for allowing us to come and speak with you today. I've got a lot to go through, so I'm going to talk a little fast. I do apologize. We went through a whole evolution of a curriculum redesign in the math department over the last near decade, starting with launching in 2019. We redesigned our pathways to transfer-level mathematics. And that's only for those students that were not placing directly into transfer-level mathematics right away. We created courses that we created pre-transfer courses that for the students that were going into business in STEM versus the students who were going into statistics or are math or liberal arts majors like Math 161 that students could take before taking statistics if they chose to, or they could go directly into statistics with a support course instead. And then next time around, when pre-transfer courses were effectively banned in fall 2022, our students in our business and STEM courses were starting in Math 25, which is our pre-calculus algebra course. And the pass rates for that were, or still are, very low, below 50%. And we created a support course for Math 25, which had some really good improvements. It was a 15% actually improvement for all students who took Math 25 with the support course. But I looked more specifically at the students who were required to take the support course, and there was actually a 22% improvement in the pass rates for those students. It's still below 50%, but the support course did help out those students. And students who were taking the support course, even if they weren't required to, even students who were actually allowed to start immediately in statistics, were electing to start in this course down here, which is to, they would have to take this course and then Math 58 before they were allowed to take calculus. I apologize. I believe I said statistics. I meant calculus. And then, starting in this fall, because our pass rates for all students who are taking their very first transfer-level math course is very low. And I'm talking about students who have not taken a math course at another college, who start here, taking a transfer-level math course for the first time. And back in fall 2022, the pass rates for those students over all of our math courses, the entry-level math courses, was 44.8%. So that and the fact that equity gaps did not seem to be closing, we decided, since we really didn't have a whole lot of other options for support for our students, we needed to create support courses for all of our entry-level math courses, with the exception of our accelerated pre-calculus course, Math 27. That's pre-calculus in one semester. So if you are a student coming here and you're going to take your very first transfer-level math course and you've not met the, what traditionally are the prerequisites for those math courses, we've got the support courses for you, and I'm hoping we're going to cut a little bit of those students who are not passing the courses, trim that down a little bit. We also worked on our placement redesign. We, starting, actually, this was a little, starting in 2019, so I apologize for the error there. Starting in 2019, all students were placed into a transfer-level math course regardless of their preparation. But back then, they were also still allowed to take pre-transfer courses if they wanted to, and plenty of students elected to do that. The only exception was if they were a STEM student and they hadn't passed intermediate algebra yet, they were required to pass intermediate algebra first. And then in fall 2022, pre-transfer-level courses were no longer available for our students. And then, of course, our support course for Math 25 was rolled out in 2023. And then in fall 2025, still, their students do not have access to pre-transfer-level math courses should they want to take them. And STEM, all STEM students are actually allowed to take calculus starting this fall, as long as they are enrolled in a two-unit support course. And every student who has not passed an intermediate algebra class or integrated Math 3 in high school will be required to take a support course. Some of them are one unit, some of them are two units. 225, Math 25, for the Math 25 course is three units. And for some of our more algebra-heavy courses, students that have a GPA less than 2.7 will also be required to take a support course. And yeah, that is it for this line. And in addition to all of the curricula and placement redesign, the math department constantly works on our professional development, participation in conferences that focus on everything we're discussing here, including our student-centered pedagogy. FAC has been a marvelous participant in some of the conferences that not only we participate in, but some of our faculty, including myself, organize and run. We also have partnered with Sonoma State University with their TIPS program and all of the internal work that we do involving data collection, including data that IERP has been so wonderful to provide, our SLO data, including and collecting data from our students through student surveys. Nearly every semester, we have work groups that are working on curriculum redesign as well as pedagogy work, just-in-time workshops. We do have those in Petaluma, though not too many students are showing up to those, revitalizing our PALS programs and partnering with various groups to create learning communities and creating other places for students to do review. And I would now like to actually turn it over to, that is it for our math part. But Cheryl is next for English. Thank you.
Hi, thanks for having us. Okay, I'm Cheryl Kavales-Doolin, the English Department. The English Department's transformation with regards to AB 705 did begin much earlier. We were one of the departments that created a lot of condensed courses. We implemented accelerated courses prior to AB 705 because our pass rates and success rates and students getting into, through our remedial courses into transfer level were not high. So after the core, the curriculum redesign, as a result of AB 705, all of our students now placed directly into transfer-level English. But we do, at the time we created, a support course, English 50. And this course is not required for students with a 2.6 GPA and above. It's recommended for students with GPAs from 2.0 to 2.6. And it's a required component for students who have a 1.9 GPA and below. The English 50 course is linked to specific sections of English 1A, which is also has a fall 25, C 1000. So the C 1000 and English 50 paired groups, those students can take those, they can take those classes together. In keeping with the spirit of AB 705, we do have an option for students, any student who wishes to opt out of the requirement, any student who is required to take it, they may opt out of that. And we have been tracking and we have data requests and looking at those success rates of the students who are opting out, who are directly placed into C 1000, but who opt out of having that support course. Overall, the English, the students who are taking the English 50 support course with C 1000 are doing, they're doing well, and they're doing, I think, on average, better than students who are not taking the C 1000 course or the English 50 support course. One of the new support courses that we're developing that will begin this fall is English 51. The English Department was looking at, this support course came about as a result of looking at our success rates for compared of the C 1000 courses that are face-to-face versus the C 1000 courses that are online. Particularly after the pandemic, we've had a much, much larger offering of online courses and students interested in online. But the success rates of students in taking C 1000 in our fully online asynchronous C 1000 courses, that success rate is lower than our, than the face-to-face courses. So we have recently developed English 51. It's Success Strategies for Writing Intensive Online Courses. They are scheduled in a way that a student would take the English 51 course. It's a one-unit course. And they would, so students would opt in to take English 51. Any student can enroll in this course. And they do not have to be enrolled in a C 1000 course in order to take the English 51. So this is a course that can support students who are writing, taking any writing-intensive course across the college. This particular course really focuses on success strategies for how to maximize your writing when you are writing in online settings for online courses and how to actively read materials, learn more information from them, identify main ideas, and then how to engage in the writing process when you're taking online courses. So students would take that English 51 for the first two weeks of a semester, and then they could take our English C 1000 courses that are late start. So it's designed so that students can take both of them, but they're not required to be enrolled in both of them simultaneously. The English Department is very committed to having additional supports for students because we don't have, we have our single transfer-level course, English C 1000. These supports are essential for helping students to succeed and to change their own mindsets about how to approach college-level writing and reading. So two of our main supports for students are our peer-assisted learning specialists, who are like tutors that are embedded into courses, and our writing center. The writing center is, we have locations, writing centers on the Santa Rosa campus and the Petaluma campus for face-to-face support. And we have an online writing center that offers students both Zoom, like real-time Zoom video support tutoring sessions and asynchronous like paper drop-off sessions. The English Department, for years before the AB 705, but also in our very recent years, we've been very committed to pedagogical transformation. I have listed up here a sampling of the communities of practice that have either been led by English faculty or have had several, like a large number of English faculty be major participants in these, in these communities of practice. The top one, language equity and justice in the classroom, this is a COP that I'm one of the tri-leaders for this semester. And it is, I think, language equity is one of the most important pedagogical transformations that English faculty can engage in and to really create more equitable teaching in their classrooms. The hands-on teaching strategies for equity and success for English 1A students, it was a very particularly focused COP. And it actually, it was through the academic senate, but it gave rise to an independent faculty interest group that has risen up in our department this year. It's a faculty group called a matter of composition, where we specifically are discussing and looking at C 1000 and what we can do better in those courses. I'd also like to highlight that our professional learning that we are engaging in has included contract and labor-based grading, increased number of student conferences, so that students are getting individualized attention from their instructors. That is one of the most key elements for student success in an English course is having that direct communication with English faculty, with their faculty, getting the most timely feedback that they can. And all of this taking place within culturally responsive and culturally sustaining pedagogy classrooms with, featuring culturally responsive and culturally sustaining classrooms with, featuring culturally responsive and culturally sustaining pedagogy. The English department has also been actively creating more learning communities, partnering for the summer bridge, partnering with Avanzando, creating, we have APAS and Puente and Emoja-supported courses. And we are constantly looking for how best we can improve our success and support our students. I'd like to introduce April Oliver to come and talk to you about the English for multilingual students.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's April Oliver. I'm the EMLS department chair. And my information is much briefer than the other two departments, but we are also a part of AB705. We were well ahead of the game when AB705 came about and we had already started redesigning our curriculum. We were one of the first community colleges in California to create a transfer-level EMLS course. So we had that happening. We also already had a direct pathway leading to our freshman composition course, which is EMLS 10. We shortened our credit pathway. We had had six courses in our pathway for credit before, and we shortened it to, to four courses and then combined our reading and writing and grammar courses together. And we used HSI funding to do that. So, so that was a nice use of that funding to get our pathway ready for AB705 implementation. Some other things that we are looking at in terms of concurrent support for our students are, we have our EMLS 10 class. We found that there have been some challenges of students being ready in those classes. So we have an EMLS 50 concurrent support class in curriculum, and we're waiting to get that approved. And then we will be piloting that in the fall. For students, not all of our students have completed high school, and so some of them are still working up our credit pathway. And so for our level below EMLS 10, which is EMLS 20, we also have a grammar support class for that, which is EMLS 300GR. And the other thing that we use HSI money for in order to look at best practices for working with students is we created an embedded instructional assistance community of practice where we looked at ways that we could use instructional assistance to work with students and with just-in-time assistance in taking our classes. We also had a COP to discuss best practices for tutoring and learning. And so we then created a tutoring and learning center for the students. And we also created a COP to work with instructors across the college for ways to work with teaching, assessing, and engaging our multilingual students, no matter where they are in the content areas. Just a couple of things I do want to share about EMLS and AB705. In some ways, we were a bit of an afterthought. When we, when the legislation first came about, we were designated as remedial English, which we are not. And so our professional organization, the California Teachers to English Speakers of Other Languages, went to the state and fought that because that is not who we are. We, we do not teach remedial English. And so there have been challenges with that, and we're happy to have a conversation to make sure that students that we have in our program are prepared for transfer and to move on to the next level. Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon. I'm going to go over aspects of our data related to equity gaps, how we define equity gaps. This has been provided before to the board related to our student equity plan. So some of this should be somewhat familiar. So the way we look at it is disproportionate impact. We look at the two populated, or we look at multiple populations, you say Population Jeremy compared to everybody that's not Population Jeremy. And we look at the difference between the two percentages and we see where that gap is at. But more importantly, we also use a margin of error, just because population numbers can vary. So for example, at SRJC, our Latinx population is roughly about 51%, 52% of our district, where our Native American population is less than 1%. So in order to ensure that we are correctly identifying the equity gaps, margin of error is the thing that we're paying attention to the most. So when we're looking at the pre-AB705 aspect of participation with inside of transfer level math and English and EMLS, we can see in terms of the light blue at the very top, that was the percentage of students who identified as white that were participating in transfer-level English and math. And we can see within, I'm going to say it looks like it's a greenish color on the screen. It is the one, two, three, fourth one down. That represents our students who identify as Hispanic Latino. They were more represented in pre-transfer level math in English than the transfer level math in English. So that was the crux of the aspect of access that was trying to be addressed within side of AB705 and the continuing of AB1705 is the aspect of access. So going to the aspect of success rates, which Dr. Holcomb briefly touched on, you can see from this table is that we're looking at pre-transfer level math in English, our success rates for pre-AB705 were 69% and 60, sorry, 51%. So I'm losing it. 59% for transfer level math and 69% for transfer level English, for transfer, sorry, pre-transfer level English. For transfer level math, it was 70%, and for transfer level English, it was 69%. We can see, of course, post-AB705, we don't have any success percentages to provide for that one. But in post-AB705 for transfer level math in English, we see that they have dipped. The noticeable dip is inside of transfer level math. You can see 70 to 57%. But we're talking about the impact, it's really about the aspect of throughput. So focusing specifically on math, this is the one that showed the biggest percentage difference. We can see that's a bit of a three-year throughput. The reason why we're looking at a three-year throughput is because pre-AB705 and post-AB705 and 1705 are very, very different realities. It's extremely difficult to look at both of them at the same time and have a comparison that is truly accurate. So what we did is we took everybody who was in their first attempt in math and fall 2017, we gave them three years to try to complete transfer level math. We did the same thing with fall 2022 and gave them three years to see if they will complete transfer level math and look at that percentage between the two. The goal of that was to try to have a better comparison between what was happening pre-AB705 and post-AB705. Just as a quick little note, when you're, when we're talking about throughput and you're looking at our chancellor's office metrics, it is math and English in one year. So we made a little bit of an adjustment to show what the true impact was. You can see in most cases that the percentage of students from those cohorts that have completed, successfully completed, transfer level math have increased, right? So we look at Black, African-American, 38 to 59%, Hispanic Latino, 40 to 64%, Asian, 68 to 71%, unknown, people who do choose not to identify, 57 to 81%, white, 54 to 73%. We do have two categories that have not seen that aspect of throughput, but they are also our smallest categories. So we're still looking into what the true impact of that is. And that is with our American Indian, Alaskan native, as well as our native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander population. So this is where I'm showing the difference between what the success rates are, as well as the aspect of throughput. More students are being successful in completing transfer level math and English in a three-year time period based off of this chart, post-AB705 than they were pre-AB705.
So there's been a lot of good work, both in the curricular realm and assessment realm. And so the next couple of slides, we'll be reviewing sort of some additional good work that SRJC has been undertaking in to support our students. And so in 2023, the California Community College Equitable Placement Support and Completion Funding allocated to districts all across the state, money is to help support comprehensive implementation of AB705 and AP1705. So funding supported multiple initiatives, including professional development, which also included equity-minded teaching practices, communities of practice, as well as collaborations between faculty and their respective institutional research offices, co-requisite support models, which you've heard some about, innovative teaching practices, and potentially new course sequences, as well as alignment of current student support services, including basic needs, mental health services, and stress management. So with this funding and recognizing that there was skepticism and misunderstanding regarding both laws, SRJC needed to focus on developing a data-driven culture at the department level. So starting in 2023, three faculty members were designated as student-centered researchers in math, English, and EMLS, and in partnership with IR, IERP, to conduct data deep dives, have faculty-driven dialogues around data, and discuss ideas on how to best support students that were placing in the transfer-level courses. And from this first year of work, multiple initiatives have emerged. You'll hear about the SRJC Connect Summer Bridge Program, continuing department data discussions, as well as a statewide COP. So I'm happy to introduce my colleague and partner, Dr. Rome Romanoli, who will discuss this further.
Good afternoon, y'all, and thank you to the Board of Trustees for inviting this really important and first-time conversation for us. And I think before I get to my slides, I want to just share a little bit of content from my heart and my lived experience in emeritus, teaching English in a pre- and post-AB1705 world. So I wanted to share kind of three things from that positioning. First, AB1705 desegregated my English 1As almost overnight. So when I arrived here to Santa Rosa Junior College, my English 1As were homogenously white, were homogenously middle-class and wealthy students, and were homogenously students without disabilities. And again, almost as if overnight, AB1705 made my English 1A classrooms reflect the beautiful diversity that is actually alive in our community. I started having blind students and deaf students and students who are unhoused, right? That was a very different experience in my English 1A classes. The other thing that I really want us to remember from that time is that we had an exorbitantly long remedial pathway, right? So I taught for 10 years as tenured faculty here, but I also taught for 10 years as associate faculty, freeway-flying to many colleges all over the state, some of whom had no remedial pathway and some of whom had one or two remedial classes, right? And that students who in our college were forced to start at the lowest levels of our remedial pathway, seven levels of remediation, right? I think about those students that two and a half, two to 5% of those students ever made it to see college English and college math, 2 to 5%. I think about those students, right? I think about those, I also think about the students who never made it. I think about the students we talked for a long time in the English department about, who took the placement test, got their placement, did the math and said, no way, I can do this, right? I think about just how punishing that pathway was, what it cost those students who actually made it, that they had to like go through the Hunger Games just to attempt college English and math. I think about not just the cost of years of their lives, but I think about the cost of parking, the cost of units, the cost of childcare, the cost of missed wages, the cost of books, right? That those were disproportionately impacting students of color, low-income students, students with disabilities. So the third thing I just want to share is about, we have done great work to open access, right? But we still have some tremendous work to do in terms of equitizing and just access, right? I just wanted to share from my leadership up and down the state and my long-term study of this legislation, that this should not be the work of just English, math, and EMLS, right? Colleges who have made really big strides in the way of achieving the spirit of AB1705, which is equitable completion of math and English in the first year, right? Those colleges have invested deeply in high-impact practices like guided pathways, right? Long Beach City College has a first-year experience and a second-year experience that focuses on transitioning students to transfer and career. Both of those programs have embedded childcare, right? I see other colleges leaning more into flexible, multimodal, and student-centered schedules of classes. I see, and shout out to Dr. Stover, President Stover, because I know this is on our academic senate's agenda, but I see other colleges with compressed academic calendars who have transformed the way they think about organizing education to, so students can do more in fewer years. The last thing that, before I get to my slides, I want to share that I've experienced at other colleges that I really hope to experience here is a shift away from a hyper-focus on students' deficits, right? How unprepared our community is to arrive on our campus. I see other colleges turning that deficit lens into a mirror of accountability and asking, what can we do to be a student-ready college so that we can warmly and equally greet all of the diverse learners in our community? And I think that is very much the spirit in which Dr. Tam and the department chairs and myself have tried to utilize these funds from the chancellor's office. And so is this? Right? So some of the emerging outcomes of that work that you'll hear a little bit more of, you'll hear directly about the SRJC Summer Bridge Program from Dean Tam. But one magic moment that came out of that work already was for the first time, I think in college history, we had Santa Rosa High faculty and Santa Rosa Junior College faculty in English, math, EMLS, and counseling come together as pedagogical partners. More of that, please, right? With all of our feeder high schools, particularly those that are serving students furthest from graduation. So in addition to that larger summer bridge and first-year experience program, as Dean Tam alluded to, we're also focusing on this department-level support that is emerging through our participation in a statewide community of practice facilitated by EdTrust West. Please click the links. Please learn about who EdTrust West is. Their mission is literally to dismantle racial and economic barriers to student success in California public education. And so we have joined a 10-college community of practice. I feel just very grateful and very proud. We're the only community of practice who has representation from English, math, EMLS, and IERP, so institutional research. So we have all been collaborating on what we had to determine as our problem of practice. And so that's one of the handouts that you all probably have. This is from EdTrust West. So they have three principles of equitable implementation. The first two, as you heard from our departments, we're doing pretty good at, right? Direct placements and concurrent support. So we decided where we have the most opportunity to grow is that third principle on the back of the sheet, right? Which says, principle three is prioritize race-conscious, equity-centered practices inside and outside of the classroom. So our community of practice has decided to focus on the top three initiatives. Maybe the board can pick the second two initiatives, but we're focusing on race-conscious goals, disaggregated data, and anti-racist classroom policies and practice. And so what that will look like at SRJC first is in partnership with IERP, an expanded qualitative data collection and analysis on the impact of AB1705 on students from marginalized groups. We've seen models of that from other campuses. We really, we know what the numbers say, but we know what the numbers say, but we don't know a lot about student experience yet, student stories. And then the other piece that we are currently building is a summer institute for EMLS, English and math faculty to come together, have some slow time together to do some of those data deep dives with their data coaches, to engage in some professional learning, and then to transform their curriculum for the fall semester. So that's two of kind of the emergent product projects that we're working on. And I'll turn it back over to Dean Tam to talk about summer bridge. I'll leave that.
All right. So last thing, we're really excited about SRJC Connect. It's our summer bridge pilot. So based off of conversation with our colleagues over at Santa Rosa High and bringing together a lot of the hard work around data and analysis to practices that this summer, this program creates a holistic support for students, prepares them to be successful as they enter SRJC. So SRJC Connect, it's a huge collaboration between not only our efforts around AB1705, but our institutional HSI STEM Avanzando Initiative, as well as the Mesa Program, and incorporates faculty and staff from not only English, math, EMLS, but counseling, disability resources, the library, as well as career education departments. And really, this is an eight-week program that's not only targeted to high school students, but also students that are re-entering the community college. And resources include classes on study skills, as well as stress management. There'll be supplemental workshops that inform students about campus resources such as counseling, financial aid, mental health, research skills, as well as career education pathways throughout SRJC. This is on top of the students also enrolling in English 1A or EMLS 10 during this eight-week pilot, where students will receive support from instructional aides, as well as the faculty and project leads will be able to be alerted on student progress as well as challenges and intervene as appropriate. On top of that, there'll be eight-week math workshops to prepare students for statistics if they are pursuing a liberal arts pathway or pre-calculus, if they are identified as STEM majors. And so by the end of this eight-week period, students will have completed six units of college credit, have completed English, transfer-level English or EMLS, and will be prepared to tackle math in the first semester of entering SRJC. And ideally, by the end of the fall semester, they'll have completed English or EMLS and math within the first semester, which is really, right? The metric from the chancellor's office is successful completion of both in the first year. And students that are pursuing STEM majors will also have continually holistic support from both the Mesa Program as well as our HSI STEM Avanzando Initiative throughout their journey here at SRJC. So this pilot program is aimed at supporting students. And a lot of outreach efforts have already taken place with presentations. And a lot of outreach efforts have already taken place with presentations at local high schools, as well as outreach to parents throughout Sonoma County. And a lot of emphasis has been placed on making sure that students have access to financial resources so that this program is either going to be free or at very minimal costs. And Mesa is also going to be paying for lunch for the entire eight weeks of students have free food, free lunch for the entire eight-week period. This is done through a huge collaboration, a lot of people. But I just wanted to thank our project coordinator, Justin Wilson, as well as our HSI STEM manager, Dr. Alyssa Walters, and Mesa manager Jessica Zabrono, as well as their staff and team for making all this possible. So we're really excited to launch this pilot. It should encompass up to, or support up to ninety students. And based off of the data that will be collected in collaboration with IERP, see what we'll do in the third year of funding that's received from the Chancellor's Office to help support implementation of AB seventeen oh five and seven oh five efforts. And I think that is the, we're moving on to discussion. Oh, that's a, that's a laser pointer, green button. There you go. All right.
All right, members of the board, that concludes our presentation. Thanks so much for inviting us to do this. And we're happy to open up to any discussion you might want to have.
All right. Thank you. I think trustee Fishman will start it off.
Well, clearly, there's not enough time, right? You know, I came here today understanding that AB seven oh five and seventeen oh five were law. And the discussion of getting rid of them is another discussion. It's really not what can happen in this room. So what I was really looking for is to try to understand the disconnect I hear. And, you know, how, that I hear sometimes from students expressing, sometimes from faculty, and trying to get down to the nitty-gritty of, it seems like it was about student support, to unwind a situation that, that, you know, I participated in that, you know, it sounds like a good idea. Just give everyone a test and we'll know where to put you. And, you know, not sort of understanding that, you know, it was sort of maybe unconscious institutional racism, you know, and what it really did and how it set things up. So I really appreciate the, what you said about the student support. And quite frankly, in the honesty, and you said some of the student support that isn't quite there yet. And I don't know if that's something the board can, can help with or support, or, you know, what you need. Really appreciated the schedule at the end because I really wanted to know, you know, from a student's perspective, what was it like when you walk in the door? What's going to happen to you and who's going to help you? You say, well, you have an option to do this, or you don't have an option to do that. Do you know that's your option? So maybe it's support and counseling. I'm not sure where the disconnect is, but there appears to be one. I have a better insight into it. So I guess I don't have a con, except maybe it was just a comment, but I appreciate at least how you helped my brain about all this.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next, we'll go to trustee Bricker.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you so much for all of the effort that went into these presentations. This is such great information, and I really want to commend everybody who's involved in this effort. It is a lot of work that is really clear, and it's really important work, but that doesn't mean it's an easy lift. So please know how incredibly appreciated all of this work is and all the effort that's gone into presenting it to the board because I've heard a lot of what my colleague trustee Fishman has said as well. And I really wanted to get some clarity around all of this. And I think what I'm seeing is the data is very clear. More students are completing these transfer level courses post AB seventeen oh five. And I believe a lot of that is because of what's happening in the classroom and the incredible student supports that are occurring around those classes. So I want to appreciate that and be really clear around that. I have also heard some narratives around the completion rate, and the completion rate has gone down. I think that's true. We can see that in the data. But I do think it's important too to note why that's happening. And my understanding of it, and you can correct me if I'm incorrect in this, but is when you open the doors more widely to students with varied levels of preparation, it is hard to maintain the same completion rates as when you're limiting what that population is that's in your classroom. And so I think it's really important to note that that is the case, and that's what's happened to our completion rates. That said, there is more work to be done, and that's why I think all these supports are so incredibly important that you've put in place. And I just want to highlight what I think is so important is the creativity around implementing that Summer Bridge Program. I mean, that's enormous. If somebody can finish at the end of their first semester, having already gotten six credits over summer, I mean, that's amazing work, and I think it gives me so much hope as to what we're going to be able to do here. That said, I know it's not perfect. I mean, the completion rates obviously have areas of ways to go. And I know what I'm hearing here is that there's a lot of efforts to put more concurrent courses in place, which I think is exactly the right move, and to look at different supports in the communities of practice, and to just learn from one another as to what it is that works here, because this work is so important. And then I think the other thing that Vice President Holcomb highlighted for me too is that students are just, some of them are not taking these courses in their first year. And so I'd love some more investigation around that and hopefully some movement as to why, you know, that's, that's not happening currently, currently. But on the whole, I just really want to appreciate what's happening here because I think it's important. This has been going on for some years, and I really see some movement here, and these numbers give me great hope. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, trustee Bailey.
Thank you. First and foremost, I want to acknowledge the collaborative work that is being done here in the district to hear the idea of the mirror of accountability, the mirror of accountability. I think that it begins to shift the understanding, or should I say, the experience of even those that are coming in, let's say with the stereotypes of, of starting from a deficit standpoint, with the resources that are being put into place. But even more so, the collaborative work of, of the departments, I'm thinking EML, EMLS, multilingual language learners, the English Department, the math Department, and to come up with the, the Summer Bridge Program, the Connect Program. As I hear Dean Tam speak with regard to the marketing, presenting to the parents and the schools that are actually, let's say, our partners in this, I think that we're beginning or right on the cusp of a transformation, a transformation in education that, again, we clearly do not have time. Again, with the information and the data that we've received, I think it's clear, clearly to note that the resources that we provide our students and, and as they enter the university, or should I say, the, into the campus, I think that we're on the right path. I think that to hear that we're collaborating also with, I believe, nine, we're one of the ten. But to look at practices, I did hear and understand Long Beach, Long Beach City College having a first and second semester. But again, I think, when I think in terms of the time or the duration that will be cut, as opposed to having six and seven years where some students never actually reach a point of taking transfer, transfer English and math, I think we're, we're beginning to open a, a more optimistic approach and, and looking at just how we can become more successful in, in, in supporting our students. So I am really delighted. I, I'm very proud to see the work and proud to not only be able to support the work, but clearly, we can see that there's a lot more to be done. But I just want to say that I'm very confident that we are on the path to being in the forefront of leadership. And I'm saying leadership in the state of California. And I'm, I'm just definitely, and I want to thank you all for bringing more of an awareness. And I too echo the sentiment of understanding that the completion rates will not look like what they did when it was the homogeneous, the cookie cutter of, you know, students that are, are, are best prepared, or should I say reflective in their GPAs? But I think that we're looking to empower other students. And, and again, as we're in the positions to be those motivators, I just want to say, uh, good job. I want to say congratulations. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Bailey. Trustee Battenfeld?
Yeah, I just want to, I mean, I, I really support what the other trustees have said so far in terms of, you know, it's, it's, it's really challenging work, but it's really important work. And, and we need to do it, and we need to support it, as you said, for, for the students. And I really appreciate the comments about, you know, really focusing on being student-ready and really asking the students, you know, what, what do you need so that you can be successful? You know, whether it's curriculum changes or scheduling. I, I thought of that because some of us were at the Call Childcare Center yesterday, and we were asking the students there, you know, what do you need as, as student parents? And they were giving some good, you know, suggestions and ideas about when childcare is available, for example, to them. So not just for their courses, but so that they can do tutoring or do support work or do extra work to prep for their finals. And so, and I really appreciate that people are looking at that and, and that you're doing it. And, and I also really, you know, appreciate, again, like everybody else said, all the extra work that the faculty and counselors and support staff are doing to look at, you know, how, how we're delivering, you know, what's most important for students to know to be successful as, as they move on, whether it's, you know, career or whatever, you know, college major they're in, you know, because it's all different. And I, and I, and I also really, having been a high school teacher, I really appreciate the efforts that you're doing with the high schools. And I would really encourage you to, to keep doing that so that there's a real clear connection between, especially as the high schools and middle schools are implementing new math standards right now too, which are supposed to help make them students much more successful and ready for the kinds of math and English that they're, that they need to be doing right now, which is very different, I think, than kind of some of the older curriculum models that, that we were doing for years and years. And so I just, you know, encourage you to, to support that. And again, as a board, to continue to let us know what we can do to, to support you and to support everybody's efforts. And again, thank you.
Any other trustees with, right, trustee Martinez?
I just want to comment that this is very exciting and informative information. I really, it reminds me of Carolina's words at the last meeting when we did the dual enrollment, that all of Santa Rosa City School students are our students. It's the same with Sonoma County, which means that that comes with all kinds of surprises, good, bad, and oh my goodness. But I think that as a team, as a group, you guys have all, y'all have actually really worked extremely hard. And with, and it made me think about my own student, my former student is all migrant students. We have a summer program. We had to reshift it. That was not the needs that they, they had. So I had to change the curriculum and provide that support. But we also did a lot of sense of belonging. They belong in college, which changed their way of, yes, I belong here. And this was by accident also helping them meet AB seventeen oh five. It wasn't, I wasn't designing the program to do that. So it made me think about that. But it was also that other support. A lot of the students, a lot of the times is, how do you make me feel when I come here? Am I, am I going to be successful? Because I don't always have the support or the tools. And the support part is really, really critical, and I really appreciate that. And I, and you know, migrant students have a thirty-five percent chance of just finishing their first year. So to change it to eighty-five, ninety percent, it's, it's drastic. So I look forward to seeing what our Summer Bridge Program does and also our continuous collaborations with our K through twelve system, especially now with the Santa Rosa City School seven through twelve system and looking at what that does, especially as speaking with other educators, higher ed educators, where the A through G, most of the students are not meeting them, right? Because unfortunately, we implemented it, but we didn't have the support. So we are also sort of going to be carrying that as a result. And so it's not a bad thing. It's just an opportunity, right? And as we see it all the time, when there's an issue, there's an issue, we can point it out until we run out of breath. But if we can also come in with multiple solutions as we, and run out of breath on that, that's actually a very valuable situation. So I'm really grateful for all of the work that you do because I know it's a lot of work. It is not just three people, four people. It's most probably half all of our employees that are involved in this, which means a lot of heads, a lot of minds and a lot of voices to try to consensus on how do we can work this. So I think we're in a good place, and we have a voice, not just here, but also statewide. So grateful for all of the work that you are doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Well, I'll just conclude by saying, you know, the obvious, right? Our goal is completion of transfer level coursework, right? And we shouldn't be happy with where we are, but we certainly need to recognize the work that we've done, given the, the circumstances to make the best of it and to continue to improve, right? This is going to be an iterative process. So, you know, I'd suggest that, you know, this be something that, you know, comes back to the board at the appropriate time to continue to talk. You know, I'm interested in looking at, you know, the numbers of we, as we have them with the Summer Bridge Program. You know, what is the enrollment and completion of, you know, even in that first semester following and in the first year? You know, those, those types of things, I think it's, you know, it's definitely a multifaceted issue. But, you know, as we can identify those different supports and treatments that we can do and then figure out where we need to, to bolster and move and identify best practices is going to be really key and just appreciate Dr. Holcomb and, and all the, the presenters today for your expertise and, you know, the many hours that you've spent thus far. And I know the many hours you're going to be spending into the future on, on refining and, you know, improving our student success. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And with that, this special meeting of the Board of Trustees is adjourned. But don't worry, we'll be back here at four o'clock.